Thank you all for coming. The minutes of the supervisors meeting on July 16th are in front of us for approval. Are there any comments or comments? Hearing and seeing done, I move we assess them. All those in favor.
All right.
All right. And now it's going to be the August safety report.
Accidents through June of this year. In June, there were 27 accidents, our highest number in two years. Ten were at various intersections. There's no obvious pattern to the accidents, except that three were on KAL and on one rainy day. We will formally request PENDO to check KAL Road surface where, the surface for wear. The total for years now 104, only one less than the same period last year. Police activity in June, there were 61 calls, six criminal investigations, two criminal arrests, 55 routine assignments, seven false alarms, five reportable auto accidents, four non-reportable accidents, but 11 traffic citations issued and 16 traffic arrests. The highlight event was, on four different nights, they were assessed from unlocked vehicles and driveways. My personal advice is twofold. Lock your car, do not be valuable visible, or better yet, in your car.
Can you say if you live with manager's report?
I wanted to announce that there's a zoning hearing on September 12th at 7:30. It's a variance to turn a single family dwelling into a three-unit apartment building, so it's open to the public. I wanted to let you all know that the supervisors and I discussed the three outstanding recommendations from the auditors, which one was the cell phone policy. And supervisors decided that they would offer, they would continue to offer cell phones to the township manager, but I do not take a cell phone from the township, I have my own. The road crew, and the supervisors, and the building inspector. And that everybody will be on one plan. And that if any of the members of the road crew, or the police, or the police itself, but any members of the road crew don't take the township plan, they can get reimbursed $30 a month.
Lisa, may I add one thing on that? Just as you had your own cell phone plan, so do I.
Yes.
So I'm not receiving anything from the township for cell phone service either.
That's correct. We talked about the recommendation that the township should not have two funded retirement plans, not, the township auditor recommended that supervisors look at retirement plans that are provided to employees. One's a state-funded and township-funded plan, the other one's a simple IRA that the employees can contribute to, and the township also matches up to 3%. The supervisors, two against one, decided to keep the retirement plan as is.
Note is that the first plan is required. You have no choice but to fund the state-sponsored retirement program. The other, it certainly wasn't active by the township.
In 2000.
Near 2000, twelve years ago.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a cap on the matching?
The other thing we met and discussed is what to do with the general fund balance. We have a whole list of items that need to be set aside and put up into a capital reserve fund for the future. We discussed it at length. We have a lot of research to do on some of these things, and the supervisors and I are going to meet again each time and what amounts would be put in the capital reserve for what About a month and a half ago, the '09 and '10 audits were done. They have not been released because the supervisors requested that they do an open space and sewer reconciliation. That's being done right now, and we hope to have that done in the next couple of weeks. Oh, I wanted to say something about enforcement letters. I know that that's a subject that everybody keeps asking about, enforcement for properties that have violations. That the zoning officer and the building inspector have been sending out a lot of letters and receiving a lot of response. I'm going to apologize in advance. I've already apologized to you, and I know, and I am going to apologize that some of the letters that went out were not correct from our building inspector. That he didn't cite the correct violation on some of them, and some of them weren't inspected before they were sent out. So I truly apologize for that, for the current situation. And we have a personnel matter going on right now that I plan to discuss at the end of the meeting of supervisors. So I apologize for that for sure.
What else can you say?
Go ahead, resident. Going back to the 2009, 2010 audit, you said there's a few things that the supervisors asked them to check into?
Just last month, they asked them to reconcile open space and sewer.
Yeah. Are we going to still schedule that for September Board of Supervisors meeting?
I hope so, as long as he hasn't done.
Okay.
He, he wants to incorporate the sewer and open space balances into the '09, '10 audit.
Yeah.
So he has to revise them.
All right. So we'll look forward to it in September, hopefully.
I hope.
It's been a long time.
Can you remember?
I wanted to, we have a no soliciting ordinance in place.
Lisa, excuse me, before you go on to that, staying with the manager's report, the one thing that you did mention, if I may jump in and suggest, is that there has been a practice in the past of paying a $50 fee for when the supervisors go on a road tour of inspection. Thank you. And I raised a question about under what circumstances that was valid to do. And you can fill in the blanks on it, but you told us that it was not valid. So with that in mind, I wanted to give you back the check that you sent me. Thank you.
The township had a no soliciting policy in place. The only thing that the township had in the ordinance that they couldn't prohibit is political, school organizations, and religious organizations. So that ordinance has been in place for a couple of years now. That we, the ordinance was challenged last month by an organization who said the township cannot blanket prohibit commercial solicitors. And they are correct. So we had to permit this organization to solicit. We've received a lot of phone calls about it. And we're revising the ordinance now, but the only thing we can do to change the ordinance is require that they come into the township, that they have a soliciting permit from the state, or soliciting license from the state, and then they must obtain a permit from the township. So unfortunately, we cannot prohibit all soliciting in the township.
Gentlemen. In Victoria Gardens, we have a sign posted at our two entrances that effectively says no soliciting. And we understand what the exceptions are. So do other developments, our communities within the township have to post a sign like that?
This is the way it works. If you live, for example, in Victoria Gardens where the roads are private, you can prohibit soliciting some of your development. If you put signs up at the entrance to your development, they cannot prohibit, and if they, or they cannot enter, and if they do, you can call the police and they can be cited. If it's on a public, if the development's on a public road, you cannot prohibit them from entering the development. However, you can put a sign up at your driveway, or on your mailbox, saying no soliciting, and if they come up to your door, you can report them and they can be cited.
With the understanding that the resident can't prohibit, religious or political?
Correct.
Okay.
You still have to get a permit if you're a religious or political organization?
Yes.
And then in that case, do you, are you going to publicly publish the permit so we know who has gotten the permits?
They have to carry it with them.
They have to carry it with them. They have to carry it, show it, do it.
Oh, okay.
They do have to carry it, but we could, we could also post them on the website.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
All right. Good idea. Thank you. All right. Yes, please. You are pleased?
I'm Richard Freeman from Victoria Gardens. But that also includes schools.
Yes.
Schools are under that.
And they're also. Yes.
Any other comments on the solicitation subject?
Our community has private roads, and we have signs posted at the entrance about soliciting in Spanish and in English. Anyway, I think it's interesting that we might want to change some of these signs to say, no soliciting except with a permit. And I think our community might accept that and put that up, because right away, it alerts on permits.
Right. That's a good idea.
Well, it's a good idea built for that purpose you just mentioned. If it does any good to the people that are soliciting, so much the better, but it's up to you, me, and everyone else, when someone knocks on the door, to ask them for their permits, their license and their permits. And that's very, very important. I hope everybody does that.
But if you're talking about the, on public roads, I mean, we're in a private road, and we're not allowing.
I saw copies of the financial report in the back of the room, so everybody wants So we wanted to note on here that this is the first report of the financial status where the separate special funds have been separated from the general fund. Open space fund, liquid fuels, library, estro, sewer. And with the assistance of our auditor, we're going to have beginning and ending balances.
Do you have a microphone there? So you're a little tall.
So this presentation will show the general fund, sewer fund, open space fund, library fund, and the state fund. This is the six-month summary of the general fund. The revenue was 1.9 million to date, which is 120% of the 1.6 million budget. The expenses were 1.4 million to date, which is 88% of the 1.7 million budget. And the net income is .4. So you can see the rest, the actual revenues versus the budget at the bottom, which, the actual revenues is 1.89, and the budget's 1.582. And then the expenditures, the actual, is 1.449, and the budget's 1.654. The major revenue item, the taxes are 83% of the total of the revenues, and right now, we're ahead 321,000 for six months. Our service fees are 7% of the total, which were greater than 65,000 of the budget, which is due, mainly due to conditional use fees that we didn't project that we would receive. And then down below, the taxes, our actual right now is 1.5 million. The major portion of that is our income tax. The budget was 1.2. Our service fees is 133,000. That includes conditional use fees, subdivision fees, zoning hearings, road fees, and our budget was 69,000. Cable TV is our actual 74,000, and we budgeted 65, and we still have another two quarters of cable TV income to receive.
Can you speak on that, Lisa? What, what cable company gives you money and for what reason?
Comcast and Verizon are required to give us a percentage of their service fees on a quarterly basis.
Thank you.
And then we have interest. We, our actual is 43,000, 481. We budgeted 75,000. Our permit is 39,000, 474, and our budget was 26,400. We didn't think building would be so active, but it is. All the other items include fines, contributions, grant money, lease, fines, and they're about, they're less than 2% of the revenues. This is the major expenses for the general fund. There's seven major categories, which makes up 81% of the expenses. I have down that the road variance is, we haven't spent 246,000 of what we budgeted for roads because we're paving right now, we're getting ready to pave right now, so we haven't paved that yet. As you can see in the bottom, the office is 339,000. The fire and emergency services is 328. That's contributions to the fire companies. The roads is 213, and we still have 246,000 to spend for paving out of the general fund. We'll be spending another 225,000 out of the state fund, which I'll show you in a minute, for paving. General government is 84,000. Police expenses is 82,000, and that included the Harshberg police when they controlled in the township. Quarterly contributions is 69,525. That's for contributions to the park authority, the Kennet Area Park and Recs, and the senior center that the township, and sometimes they contribute to the KEU, but they haven't this year. And then there's 57,000 for engineering, which is for stormwater, any traffic studies or road engineering that we need done. And then the all other items is 274,000, which includes township building, the maintenance garage, building permit, planning and zoning, and conditional use fees, which is less than 5% of the budget. This is just letting you know that if you look at the quarterly comparison for the revenues and expenditures, it's just letting you know that they're not consistent quarter to quarter because some things we don't receive in the first quarter, but we might receive in the second, or we might pay things in different quarters than we did the previous quarter. The revenues for the first quarter was 618,000 versus the 1.3 million in the second quarter. The expenses were more consistent. The first quarter was 814,000, and the second quarter was 635,000.
Lisa, good question. When do you budget? Do you budget monthly, or do you just budget more broadly?
That's in my next slide.
Oh.
We actually, we budget annually, but what we're going to do before we do the next presentation is we're going to change the budget in the system to a quarterly budget, to make it more consistent, looking at the budget versus actual. And we're going to reduce the number of major categories in the general fund by consolidating like categories. And we're going to make sure that the general fund is free of any special fund transactions, specifically meaning sewer, capital sewer expenses, and open space, anything like that. The following part of this slide is for the special funds. And like I said, there's no beginning and ending balances yet, but we will have them as soon as they're confirmed by our auditor. So we created a separate sewer fund. The revenue for the first six months was 405,000 versus 591,000, which was budgeted. More than 97% of the revenue is generated through residential and industrial user fees, and the township pays the major portion of that out to Kennet Borough. The expenses totaled 737,000 versus the budget of 1.1 million, and 57% of that was the pump station costs to construct pump stations and operate them. So the net income was minus 331,000.
Excuse me, Lisa, did I hear you correctly? 57% of expenses are pump station operating, or operating and construction?
Operating and construction.
So...
The major portion of that is construction.
Right. So presumably, if the construction work is finished next quarter and next year, that number is going to be significantly different.
Yes, it says that we're going to extend the sewer lines on three roads. And up five points to then...
Could be lower, but it's not...
They'll be lower for about a year.
Okay.
And then they'll go up again.
Okay. However, Lisa, I could, wouldn't the township create a sinking fund for future construction costs?
Yes.
If that's the case, then you're going to even out your construction expenses over 30 and 40 years.
Yes, that's our plan.
Okay.
We did have our engineer create a spreadsheet for our accountant that has the cost of, to replace all pump stations in the future, projecting out 30 years. So you can see on the bottom, the revenue, the residential fees is 280,000, the industrial fees is 122,000, connection fees is 2,500, and interest and miscellaneous are 126 and 45, for a total income of 405. The expenditures, the pump station's operating cost, that also includes construction, is 421,000, 8928. The residential sewer fees that we pay to the borough is 168,000. The industrial fees is 111,000. We do add in some expense for payroll because of the employee in the building that sends out all the sewer bills, and our road manager spends a lot of time on sewer. There's 11,000 for grinder pumps, which we had to buy for a couple pump stations. Engineering was 10,000, and repairs was 154, and miscellaneous was 826. This is the six-month summary for open space. The revenues are from interest and open space tax money, which totals 458,000, and our budget is 756,000. Our expenditure, our expenditures were, well, I'm sorry, the tax monies we received was 455,000 to date. Our expenditures was miscellaneous for $184, and they were for maps that were created for open space. The open space purchases was 55,000. 30,000 of that was for the Ralph Schmidt easement documents, and 20,000 was for BURK. I think that's correct. To prepare to, it would be initial fees to start that.
Lisa, can you tell me why there's a difference in the budget versus actual on revenue?
Because open space money we receive all throughout the year, just like our income. So, and in July alone, we received, I think, about 200,000 for our income, and I forget what the open space was, but we receive it all year.
So the anticipation is that the budgeted and the actual should be in the same ballpark?
We usually get more than budgeted with open space and income.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa, a question about the sewer funds, to go back for just a second. I know that we're generally on a cash basis, but do you also track billings that have not been received, like these are receivables in the commercial enterprise?
We do, and after they haven't paid for a second quarter, we file in court. The same with engineering fees that haven't been paid, we do the same thing. This is the summary for the library tax. To date, the township receives 142,000 of the projected 124,000. We anticipate to get the remainder in miscellaneous fees throughout the rest, the rest of the year. We have distributed 148,000 of the tax money to the library. It's higher than the revenues because we had some money left that was deposited from last year in the beginning of the, of the year. This is the state fund. Our revenue has been 226,000, and the budget was 217,000. We will not receive any more money this year for state funds. We receive liquid fuels money every year, but it, the amount does change. The road term back, we receive that 25,200 every year, and the amount does not change. And then this year, we budgeted to spend 215,000 on paving, which we're doing this Anybody have any questions?
Is this all going to be on the website?
Yes, we have put this on the website. I put the finances on the website a couple of weeks ago, but I will put this on the website too.
On the, there's been a lot of work on Route 1, which borders us. Has much money or any money been sent by the township on Route 1? All the construction work, the road work?
No, there is no, the only money that's been spent is, we had to get involved and discuss mast arm ties and make a decision on that. So there was just a little bit of money spent on engineering, but other than that, no.
Richard Goss, Chester County Press. Lisa, just to verify, if you could repeat, there were two open space purchases.
Yes.
This year. Could you repeat those purchases?
Well, let me rephrase it. They weren't actually purchases, they were monies to begin the easement process. So Schmidt is one, which is on the agenda tonight, and that was money that the township had to pay to the North America Land judge. And then the other monies was for the BURK property, which is the easement the township or the supervisors are working on now, and it was just to initiate the process.
When the church was moved back to make room for the extra lanes, did we incur any, any expenses on that move?
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
Penn dot P, yeah, Penn dot P for everything.
Good.
The planning commission worked on it, though.
The planning commission.
They sure did.
Yeah.
But you didn't...
We didn't charge.
But you objected to the way it was handled. There you go.
Lisa, can I ask you a question about the Route 1, the new work that was done? This has nothing to do with financial. It has everything to do with the completion of the road and the addition of the new lane.
Right.
Last night, I was coming home that way, and I noticed that that new section has become a speedway.
Yes.
And people are racing down the far right-hand lane, which is, it ends in, as to, what's the road?
Longwood.
Greenwood Road.
Greenwood Road.
And people are cutting in, and it really has become a new speedway here. Who is responsible for traffic monitoring? Us or the state?
Us.
Both.
Both. Yes. Penn that's responsible for the, you know, the entire road. We are responsible for all the traffic signals on the roads. The one at Greenwood, we split the maintenance with East Marlboro. They are responsible for the light, if it ever needs to be replaced, but we split maintenance costs with them.
And while we're on the subject of speedways and the impact of the construction at Longwood...
Yes.
Sorry, I'm Sidney Faulkner, Kenton Township. During the construction, Byard Road was used as the detour.
Right.
The out, the detour for people who didn't want to wait out the, the long wait times on Route 1 that were incurred by the construction. Very few of those people using that detour, 1025 down Byard Road. And that, now that they have discovered that, it is persistent. There's much... There's much more traffic on Byard Road. And I know Chief McCarthy has been out to Byard Road in the past. We've had this issue with Byard Road exceeding the 25 mile an hour speed limit before. He has put a, you know, the, the, the speed detection thing up there once, maybe twice. Chief McCarthy said, correct?
That's correct.
But, but it's, it's pretty excessive. And it's, it's gotten worse instead of better, and I think the construction being completed has helped some, but there's still a lot of people coming down that road and...
Well, maybe Chief McCarthy could...
I sat on, I sat on Silver's Mill today. I sat on Silver's Mill today for an hour and a half because we had that complaint. Actually, the traffic wasn't really that bad, but it's Monday because it varies during the week. We moved the speed board around, it's requested, we're looking into, we were authorized by the supervisors to buy another one, and we think we located two for that price. That's where we are with it, is they're a different type, and we have quite a bit of demand for them, mostly in the developments. But you're right, I mean, it's, traffic's traffic. Hillendale, to me, is worse than I've ever seen.
Yeah.
But, but it's there. I mean, the traffic has to do with a lot. New Garden Township to the west of us is, is doubled in size in the past ten years. So they have to get to 52 on Route One somewhere, and Hillendale is really taking the beating for who's done that today.
And it's not just, you know, it's, it's a public road, traffic is permitted on the road, they wouldn't use it as a workaround, that's fine, but the speed limit is another issue. And there's a curb on Byard Road, right by our house, at Silver's Mill, that there are frequent accidents on, it's a known bad spot, there, we witnessed some very bad accidents there. And I can tell you, it happens during rush hour, early in the morning, I don't know what time you get out there, Chief McCarthy, but it, it could be that you missed the bulk of it, because when we're standing out there with our, we stand out there with our son to get on the school bus, I mean, it's ridiculous, the speeds that they're going down there. I've had people numerous times, when I go 25, pass me on Byard Road on double yellow line, because I'm going 25 between, you know, okay, I'm going 25 miles an hour, and they hate that. They're used to going 40.
Right.
At least.
Well, maybe, Albert, would you be willing to go out there and monitor it?
And I'll tell you, when it gets really bad, is when school starts, because then everybody's running around taking their kids to school. September is deadening.
As you know, Lisa, I'm out early, I'm all over place, but there's only one of me, and you have a lot of roads.
I understand.
But I move around for that reason, and...
Right, but maybe, since she's pointing it out, we can check it out, and we can also put the J-Mar out there, which monitors the speed, so we can see how fast everybody's really going and...
Okay, that's another, we have an active count there.
I don't know when the last time anyone was on.
I need to check tomorrow.
But we can do that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I just wanted to thank Bill McGaw, because he helped me with all of this, so it was extremely helpful, and I appreciate his time.
I'd like to thank our manager for putting this together. I would say, my name is Coach Al, I would say we're probably almost as unique as the township in having this comprehensive financial discussion this year. Anyone with an accounting background knows how hard it is to take partial data and try to make sense out of it, and this is remarkable, and, and I, I really want to congratulate Lisa for doing this for us.
I think she did a great job.
It's very...
Is he still on, Lisa?
Help me, for a minute. I don't have a, use the camera. I want an angle on that.
Jim's the expert.
Does he have an expert certificate?
Yes, he does.
Great, we've given him two. Does he want to go on?
Why aren't you doing that? The next item on the agenda is the nuisance ordinance. We made some revisions to the nuisance ordinance, mainly updating different definitions that weren't correct. We talked about height of weed and grass, mucin grass, which is not just weeds. And then, yeah, they, they were mainly just definitions. The planning commission reviewed this ordinance and recommended it for approval to supervisors. It's amending ordinance 181 that's already in effect.
Lisa, maybe I should wait until there's a motion on the floor before we discuss it.
What's the nuisance?
If, if a nuisance ordinance is defined as any use activity or condition upon public or private property of the same kind of township that causes, creates, or maintains unreasonable annoyance or discomfort, discomfort to persons beyond the boundaries of such property, interference with the health or safety of persons beyond the boundaries of the property, or persons who could reasonably, reasonably be expected to enter such property, and disturbance or interference with the peaceful use and enjoyment of persons or property of others within the township.
Is this the same thing as the property maintenance?
No.
No? Well, let me...
Well, we, I'm, that's what I'm trying to say, if, if this one's in, and then property maintenance deals off the map.
Yes. The property maintenance code is a building inspection, inspection code, which is totally separate from this. However...
You're going to run them together?
No, this has been in effect for many, many years. The supervisors were, requested that some of the definitions be changed because they weren't correct in the nuisance ordinance. So this has been in effect a long time. What, and I'll tell you what is underneath it. It defines what garbage is. So they are two separate things. However, if somebody can be cited for a nuisance in addition to a property violation, so if there's something, if, if somebody calls and says that I have garbage all over my property, they can cite me under the nuisance ordinance for having garbage, and it gives a definition of what the garbage is. Garbage is accumulation of garbage, rubbish, or discarded or waste materials, but it does not concern a brush pile.
A, a waste material?
Yes.
So that's another vague... We're, we're talking vague, because as vague as the building code is...
Well, I, I was looking back there to see if they have something more on waste materials.
You have a section in there about piles of vegetative materials which were accepted.
Yes, which is brush piles are accepted, but it does not describe what we did. So yes, you could say that today.
Okay, well, wait until the next section comes up.
It also talks about junk materials, junk vehicles.
What's junk materials?
Junk materials is accumulation of unused or abandoned machinery, equipment or appliances, and all forms of waste or refuse of any type of materials, including scrap, metal, glass, industrial waste.
Time-wise, unused, when, when do you have to use it by?
That I can't answer. I, I do not know that answer.
Another vague, vague, broad area that we can go, because I was told today that if I have something sitting there, and I could have just said that said it there, and because they wrote down and deemed that it was trash or garbage, I can be cited for it. Sounds pretty bizarre to me, but...
I agree with you, that's right.
And who is it that, that, the building inspector can come up and tell me, you didn't use that, you need to get rid of that. I was told to get rid of a spare tire, you need to get rid of it. Well, I'm supposed to get rid of the spare tire for a trailer I have, but if I have a flat tire, I'm supposed to go out and buy a new one? Now, that's being a little bit unreasonable.
I agree with you.
I read the ordinance before I left, it did say something about it could be, as long as it was screened, so if your spare tire is just not in view of a public road, from what I read, I understood that that would be acceptable.
No, what I was told is acceptable is I need to build a building and put everything I have inside a building so that it won't be in clear sight.
I think the new ordinance cleared it up, but I could be wrong.
I, I have to tell you, I asked our building inspector about that comment, because you told me last week that he said that to you, and I find that very unacceptable, that he can tell our residents that they have to build a structure to put their equipment in, or whatever else, because that is not, and I said I want you to show me, and Clay Burke says that, and he said, he said that he, he said that there was equipment that had been sitting there for a long time that wasn't, he thought was inoperable.
And, 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 thanks is inoperable. I have snowplow equipment, which I haven't used because it didn't snow this past year. Give me a break. Are we being unrealistic?
No, do not.
Do not, I apologize, I totally apologize to you for that, I...
Yeah, I, I think we've, we've apologized to you, you have a number...
No, but you, you haven't heard the whole...
I haven't paid for it.
The whole gist doesn't either.
Indeed, that's correct. We know that we need to do some more work. We brought a lot of this to our attention. We appreciate it, we apologize for the trouble that it's caused you, and it has caused you trouble.
Well, this has gone on for three weeks with this gentleman, and I'd like to have my say on it, and give the whole story on it.
Can we finish this ordinance, and then you can have your say?
Sure.
Let's just finish it.
Lisa, before you go on, may I just comment? I'm not trying to, to carry on the tension of it, but the statute, the ordinance does have a reference under nuisance. A, it has one and two, unreasonable annoyance or discomfort to persons beyond the boundaries of such property, and two, interference with the health and or safety of persons beyond the boundaries of such property, or persons who could reasonably be expected to enter upon such property. So if you have a spare tire, and it's not visible from the road, seems to me that you probably don't violate the statute. So what I would suggest is that you take a copy of this and review it in, in conjunction with the issues that you're wrestling with, and that we're going to wrestle with in executive session later tonight, and perhaps we can solve some of these problems.
I got enough copies of stuff that he tried to explain to me, which he couldn't explain anything.
Okay. All right. Well, just trying to, I'm just trying to show that, that there, there are some, some of the language is, is broad, you have to protect your interest on, on those specific issues you mentioned. I don't know how large your property is, but if, if somebody can drive by it and they can't see the spare tire, then it seems to me that's not a nuisance.
Well, I could care less if they see my spare tire or not.
But the statute does, that's the problem.
But that's unrealistic, is where I'm concerned, because it's my property, which I paid for, which the township hasn't paid for, and I pay taxes on it, but you're going to tell me how? He told me today that I'm, I'm smart enough to pay my own property, smart enough to pay the taxes on it, but I'm not smart enough to take care of the way he wants to take care of. Well, you want to, everybody want to tell me how the, my property's supposed to look? I'm happy with it. I paid for it. It's not in a development. It's an acre and a half. The neighbor, which I don't have a problem with, which I pointed out, and then he told me that the zoning, well, he's zoned different than me. I said, really? Where's the facts? When you look at the facts, it's zoned the same way, but it's all right because his, he, he runs his business out of there. How, how does that work? He's telling me that the zoning over there is commercial, and mine's residential. I bought the property 25 years ago, there wasn't nobody out there. It's my property. I've done things at that place for the last 25 years, and I had snowplow equipment and stuff, and if people don't like it, they can build me a building, no problem. Anybody who wants to volunteer to spend the money to build me a building, I'll put it in. And we can have a volunteer day, clean up the place, anybody who wants to add assistance to make it look like they want.
Okay, go ahead, Lisa, please.
So I'm asking, you guys have been presented this ordinance?
I will make the motion that we accept the ordinance, but I'm not a licensed or a certified...
A little bit of discussion, if I may. This is the first time that it's, that this particular ordinance has been in front of the public. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we don't have the opportunity for interested citizens to look at it and respond back. But I'm particularly concerned about one, one or two particular sections, and I'm referring to F, debris and pollution is the one that comes to mind, permitting creating or performing any activity, including but not limited to open burning, in a manner that permits unusual amounts of dust, dirt, dust, debris, smoke, soot, cinders, fly, ash, mud, noxious or offensive fumes, that's one of them, gases or odors, that's one of them, polluted liquids, residential or commercial or swimming pool wastewater or runoff, other waste or any hazardous substances being passed to or deposited on adjacent property or any public road or highway. My, my concern in reading that one is, that sounds to me like mushroom farms. And I don't know what, I don't know what the effect of this ordinance will have on the majority of the mushroom farms that are in our, in our township. And I have the highest, I have absolutely the highest regard for the planning commission and their review of this, and I sat through many of them and did not think to ask that question, and to the planning commission, I apologize that I'm raising it now and not then. But I do have the concern that, that perhaps this might create some potential problems, because the mushroom industry is a very important industry in this region and in this township. And so far, we've lived with this and had their problems, but I wonder whether it could become one. So I, I'm only throwing that out for concern and consideration, and particularly because it's the first time it's come before the community in public discussion.
I move table this in public meeting.
I second that. Okay. Hold the paper.
Can I make a comment about that procedure? Number one, I think we had an understanding a number of months ago that if an ordinance, a referendum was brought up at an official board of supervisors meeting to introduce it, to discuss it, to answer questions, that it would not be voted on that same night.
I, I brought this up a couple months ago that they were working on this, and it's been on the website.
Was it discussed with questions and that type of thing? I don't remember.
It wasn't, nobody, no, nobody asked questions on it.
No, it wasn't. That was the purpose, of giving the public, the residents, the opportunity to listen to it and think about it, and the next time, the next meeting, the next official meeting, you would bring it up again, maybe some corrections we made, and you could vote on it again.
Thank you, Bill. We now corroborate that by the fact that we are tabling them.
I was just talking about the procedure, not the fact that you tabled it.
We'll have to make sure that that procedure is followed, I think it's a good one. Bill?
With Scott's point, reading about disposal of various liquids and waste and what have you, has anybody cross-checked the proposal against what the state EPA procedures and processes are, or the fed, federal EPA restrictions?
Okay, I'm the township attorney. That's right.
Thank you.
I have a question, going back to the beginning here, about sound, who judges the decibel quality, who says two people playing the piano is noise, or...
Sorry.
In a house, or noise, you know, who's making that judgment call?
Well, we ran into this quite a number of years ago with compressor noises from mushroom farms at night. And there was a, a procedure in our policy at the time to measure it, and it had to do with number of decibels at a certain distance, and that was just fraught with trouble, because so many things would affect the amount of noise that at that moment went from A to B. Such things as fog, wind, ambient noise, et cetera, so forth, and so on, so we dropped I can't define noise because it's a state of... I can't define noise because it's a state of art, if you will. Like I, I certainly know it when I hear it or see it. That's not good enough. Quite so. But I don't know how else to do this. If, if someone calls either 911 or the township or Albert and, and something is out of order insofar as the amount of noise, it needs to be investigated. And hopefully it will be solved at that time. But insofar as trying to issue a summons to someone that their noise level at 100 feet in the southwestern direction from point A to point B is 265 versus the ordinance of 260, that's not going to fly. It just isn't. So I'm sorry. I wish I could be more precise, but I certainly, I think I've been very, very vague. Go ahead, you have your name.
Thank you. Richard Doncaster, Kari Press. I just wanted to verify, um, and ask this question again, just for confirmation. Uh, may I ask again, who wrote the nuisance ordinance, ordinance number 181? And who is, has written the ordinance 204, which is being tabled for the next meeting?
The township attorney.
The township attorney wrote that. Any consultation with anyone?
The zoning officers.
The zoning officers. Okay, great. And is ordinance 204 in its form, current form, available immediately on the website? Thank you.
I had another question or comment, uh, as looking at other directions that this ordinance could impact us in addition to the mushroom farming. Uh, as we get more towards having apartments and condominiums, this, this ordinance seems to be, uh, scaled towards a property where you'd have more of a single residence or building on a larger tract of land with a perimeter. But if you get to, if you read the same ordinance with the context of a condominiums right next to each other, you could easily have violations frequently that wouldn't maybe be anticipated. And I'm wondering if, in checking for the agricultural use, if we could also consider the impact that this would have on, just looking at it through, houses that are close together, apartments or condominiums, where if someone, uh, finishes up a trash bag and leaves it outside of their front door to take down to a, you know, disposal area later, that someone will complain that there's a trash bag in the common area temporarily, but that that wasn't moved, something left in the parking lot. That, you know, you, you can envision a lot of scenarios where close residences could cause violations, maybe the rules the way they're written. I, I don't know. Like, that would be, uh, maybe another thing to think about that we-
You're quite right. That ought to be part of the thought process.
Mike?
Yes, please.
About the noise. A couple of months ago, I don't know if you heard this or not, but Longwood at, at Open Earth Theater, they were having a performance.
Yes.
And their amps returned too loud. A neighbor called the, the police and they came and checked it out and made them turn their amps back. So there's a instance of the noise.
Good, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, I understand where this is going. First of all, it's into zoning. All the decibels are into zoning. But you've got to use judgment in this. Most of the judgment comes from your enforcement officers. Uh, in the case of noise, the crimes code has unreasonable noise. There's a lot, you have to look at how the courts address that and we have to interpret it to apply. So there's a lot of other laws that govern this. The nuisance ordinance were those kind of things where the neighbor says, and the guy's got trash all over the place, it's been there for a week, it's 90 degrees outside, I need to do something about it. I need, the police need some kind of mechanism to do something about it. That's the purpose of the nuisance ordinance to start with. But there are other laws. The mushroom industry, I believe, is exempt from almost everything, because I know they're exempt from open burning. I don't know about the runoff, but I'm sure they're restricted very well. So you have to look at the other laws too. And I sit here and say, this one ordinance is the one tool we have to have. We have to have it for certain items. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Victor.
Okay, Victor Murray. I've been a township resident for 25 years. I got a letter stating we, we believe you may be in violation of this maintenance property code within regards to vehicles and trash. I called the building inspector on August 6th after receiving this letter. He said he'd be over. I said, will you come over and bring the code with you? Well, he showed up. He didn't have identification on him. He didn't bring the code. I said, first of all, explain to me the vehicles. That must be an error. Every one of my vehicle, I have three vehicles, they're tagged, titled, and inspected. They all moved, so I don't know what he's talking about. It must be an error. Well, did you write this? Well, I didn't write the, did you sign this letter? He said, yeah, I did sign it. So you're just sending this stuff out arbitrarily? So I requested for him to send me the information, the, the, Phil, property maintenance code. After last week, after two weeks go by, I called Lisa and I said, Lisa, I talked to this guy and I explained the situation to her. And it wasn't until Friday, he got it together and sent it to me. And said, send me a copy of it, but it's excerpts of the property maintenance code. I read it over as he requested and he said, call so we can set up a meeting to discuss this. I called. Said, everything you sent me, I don't see anything you're talking about that pertains to what you, you first discussed. He didn't even send the right papers to begin with. But don't you have section 303? I said, not what you sent me. So he showed up again today with the whole code. Told me, yeah, you are, you are definitely uh, in violation. Now, August 6th, I asked him to show, I said, what credentials you had to be the building inspector? Show me. So today, I said, show me the, your credentials to be building inspector. Well, he whips out his card, he throws it to me, I look at it and I said, you really just didn't hand me this? Because it's expired. He is not certified. So I thought, he said, I have all the information, all the new stuff back at the township building. I said, really? Okay. So I got on the internet and I looked it up. You can see every inspector in Kennet Township, which there's five others for Kennet, not Kennet Township, Kennet, with Kennet addresses. His name, I couldn't find it anywhere. I called and the guy said, well, let me look through this. He said, you know, you're absolutely right. He, he's not certified to be a building inspector because his certification has expired. Now, I'm supposed to believe everything he says as gospel, but he can't give me a straight answer. I've never seen, he couldn't give me, I said, give me one fact that you gave me on this. And he couldn't say one thing. And I said, well, the only fact is, the fact is you hand me a copy, you finally hand me a copy of the whole building maintenance code. I said, how can you say that the neighbor's property is different than my property? He said, it's zoned differently. I said, did you look at the zoning map? No. I said, can you tell me where the property lines are? No. So you, you're, you're going through this whole thing, all half cut and nobody's looked at anything. He had, didn't take any of the facts in consideration. He didn't look at anything. He didn't know if it was my property he's looking at or neighbor's property. And he ain't authorized to do it. I mean, we've been through this with the building inspector not being certified by the state of Pennsylvania before. With Brendan Beaumont, is that correct? I mean-
I had no Brendan Beaumont was a cert.
But was he certified a long time ago?
I knew he was a building inspector, but I never knew, I've never heard that he wasn't certified.
I never heard that either.
And, and he can't, and, and the building inspector came down there, I spoke with him in length. Now, this has been, twice he's been to my place for more than an hour and a half first time and two and a half hours today. And he couldn't give me a definitive answer. He couldn't give me a timeframe that I was allowed to have anything there. What he, what he deemed was, was garbage or trash. If I had a piece of pipe to make a repair, I have to use it in a certain amount of time. Well, that's totally unreasonable. Now, I've been there for 25 years. The guy next door, and he said, oh, that's all right. He's, he's over there. What, what, how do you mean? Is, everything's different for me from next door? Am, am I being unreasonable?
No, you're not being unreasonable. Um, and we, I, I have to go back and say again to you that your case has been handled very poorly. We are going to take action. We will do it as quickly as we can. Uh, and that's the only, and again-
Well, where do we stand in the township now without a building inspector?
I just found this out after we came back from your house.
Oh, but he told me, oh, I have all the credentials right back in the office.
Well, that's not-
I know that, I'm the first.
And, um, you know, he told me, you know, because his, um, car just expired last week.
It's Friday, to be exact.
That's right. And-
But you know what? It's a three years license, it's a three years license. And he's supposed to be a professional, an official.
And I totally-
And I, I, I want to know what courses did he take, did he take the required courses?
Look, we can't get into that. I think we're going a little bit too far here. And I, and I understand that you are very upset, as you well deserve to be. But I don't think that it serves any useful purpose for us here to-
Okay.
Consider this. I've told you what we're going to do. And I give you my word, I give you the word of the board of supervisors and Lisa. We are going to take every action we can as quickly as we can. We will have a certified building inspector in place as quickly as we can.
Can I speak on that?
We can't get them instantly.
We do have one instantly.
We do.
I, I wanted to explain first. Um, you know, it's, it's the building inspector's responsibility to keep up his class, he can keep up his certification. I asked him months ago if he was prepared so that he would have his certification. Well, I, I need to explain. And, and he said he was. So I just found this out this morning. I immediately notified the supervisors and told them, you know, we need to discuss this. And that's exactly what we're going to do as soon as this meeting ends. I sent the building inspector home and I immediately called, um, a man named Andy Kirk who, who works for, um, another, another township, I think it's London Grove, who's going to do the inspections after he gets done his other job until we figure out what we're doing. And, and he is, his certifications are F P.
One more question. Go ahead, say it. Yes. Well, I make a suggestion, uh, relative to this, not the precise thing. But since you must have a number of employees who require certifications of various forms, would it, would it make sense to put that on a schedule? And make sure they, a month in advance or whatever, uh, that they in fact were on the path to getting their renewal or whatever?
That's exactly what I did. And he's the only employee that requires certification.
He's the only one?
He's the only one.
Oh, okay.
Other than driver's licenses.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's the only one.
Okay. Good, that's a good idea.
So, you know, I, I really apologize. Unfortunately, you know, I don't know until you told me on Thursday what happened with him. I didn't know that occurred. I didn't know that he hadn't inspected your property until you told me. And when you told me, I, he was out of the seminar and I immediately discussed it with him Friday. So that's, you know, unfortunately, I, I didn't know. That's how he handled your situation. So I apologize. Um, I wanted to bring up the Board Penn's Manor Development. We, over the past year and a half, the developer, um, constructing the development has shown no progress in, um, finishing the development, such as the roads, stormwater, their sidewalks, um, landscaping, meadow. They've done nothing. They were in bankruptcy for a while. I think they're out of bankruptcy now, but they still had no contact with township or homeowners association. We sent them three letters requesting that they respond with a path forward for this development and they've not responded. The township attorney has advised that the supervisors authorized myself and the township attorney to take all necessary steps to enforce the developers agreement and take possession of the remaining escrow that's held by M and T Bank. Which would mean that the township has to take over, take the escrow and finish the development.
How much is it?
The escrow, the escrow is about 500,000.
And do we have estimates at all across?
Yes. Right around 500,000. Do you guys agree with that?
Lee, could you be clarified for me when you say that the 500,000 is not to take care of the development? But there are certain other things that go along with the development that we would not be responsible for.
That's correct.
Can, I think it would be good for that to be clarified so that people don't expect that everything will be done as, as to the way they purchased the property when in fact, we're not taking on that responsibility.
The only things the township would be responsible for are the public improvement, which includes streets, stormwater, um, any sewers, but that's completed, landscaping, and then the meadow. Personal properties such as your windows, your doors, your sidewalks, things like that, the township will not fix or install if the developer didn't do something for property that they were supposed to do.
Are all the lots finished?
Yes.
So there really can't be much left then? The final code on the road?
There's a top code on the road and there's, um, the stormwater basements need to be turned over to, um, final condition. The landscaping, the meadow needs to be implemented.
Well, the landscaping, do, do you have the plan that they submitted?
Yes.
So you mean how much, the cost of all that?
There's only about 14,000, like the landscaping. It's the main-
But the, the pain in the road, you're weeding. I mean, you said there's 500,000 in escrow. Is that going to, is that going to cover everything then?
Well, we have an estimate from our engineer that that should cover it. However, because we have to pay prevailing wage, it probably will not. So that's what we have to, we are going to have to, um, sit down, get exact cost on everything and determine what can be completed.
It's an O D C, let's see, let's go, this O D C. When the developer comes in, he puts money in certain specific escrow subjects. Roads, landscaping. And if he puts so much in landscaping and he has a surplus in that amount, if I'm not correct, that amount of money cannot go to any of the other escrowed amounts. So in this case, if there's $14,000 in landscaping and they only need 12 of it, am I right? That, that 2,000 cannot go to roads?
No, it's different ones from township, dollars of the letter of credit, yes.
Well, having just originally gone through this.
Would you like to hot you this chat?
I'll, I'll sign out as the project manager here. Why don't you give Penn's Manor the option of completing it themselves? And turn over the escrow to them, at which point they, when they hire contractors and act as the general partner, don't need to pay prevailing wage rates.
Well, that's something the supervisors can discuss if they want. I know the township attorney has advised against that and have for public growth.
Because these roads will be dedicated, right?
Yes. So I think, I don't, they can definitely ask him that, but I don't know if that's a possibility because of-
Because you're, you're, you can get twice the amount of work for $500,000 without paying prevailing wage.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I loathe that we, um, uh, adopt the resolution that was proposed by corporate county, by township council. I'm not sure of the exact language. I assume you can worth it for me.
I understand that and I will check back as well. Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
I distributed to all three of you a proposal from John Gott. I don't know much about this, so I-
Let me explain, let me explain what this is. It's a very small amount of money and it's a very short duration contact, but it's best that it be brought forward. It has to do with a hole in the process of trying to get conservation easements in the township. We've been working on a procedure as to, once we have identified the conservation easement, the review process, evaluation process, and et cetera, et cetera, and so forth and so on. Not addressed in any of those deliberations is the primary thing that needs to be done. And that is to go around the township, identify potential conservation easements. People, the names of the people, the owners, the zoning, et cetera, so forth, and then knock on their door figuratively.
and then knock on their door figuratively. I've done a great deal of that work in the township before, when the Penn Township Land Trust was here. And that was relatively successful. Nobody has been doing it since the land trust, Penn Township Land Trust vacated the township. I have begun doing it. And toward that end, we are gonna discuss the Schmidt easement, which has been discussed in this room quite some time ago, rather exhaustively. And there is another easement coming behind it. There are a lot more that need to be done. And figuratively, it takes a hundred cups of coffee to get it done. Going back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth. And I speak from strong experience. This contract with John Gatt, Gatt Perspectives, John is a resident of the township. He was on the board of directors of the Penn Township Land Trust. He knows very much about conservation easements. And we've kind of looked pretty hard for someone to do this work. And we believe he is capable of doing this, and he has shown a willingness to do that. This contract is to engage him on an hourly basis, to have him go out. I have personally given him the number of deals that I have developed over the last many years. And he is waiting for this contract to be signed, and he will then go forward and do it. It's on just strictly an hourly basis. And toward that end, if there are any questions among these folks, please?
Have you made a motion?
I will make a motion to accept this proposal.
I'll second it.
I have some discussion. I have, first of all, I want to say that I know John. I have the highest regard for him personally and professionally. So my comments have nothing to do with John. But I do have a concern about the, the language, one section particularly. And I have a question about our procedure for reaching out to John and getting this contract. I, if I heard you right, there was no effort to, to advertise his position?
Correct.
Or to contact anybody else that was directly with John?
Correct.
And I don't think that's the appropriate procedure that this township should use for hiring people. Even though we know the person is a good person and could do the job. I think that we should be digging deeper into that process of those that can fill the goal. We should have a clear job description defined. We should advertise it, or discuss it, or look for it. Put it on the website so that people that have an interest can, can reach out. So I have a concern about the process for how this is happening. This is the first time this has been before this board. This is the first time, other than since Lisa sent it to me in preparation for today's, tonight's meeting, it's the first time I've seen it. But I'm particularly concerned about the section of the, the description of what John proposes to do. And as far as I can tell, this is John's proposal, this is not from the township to John. It's written on his letterhead, and it's identified as proposal. And in reaching out to landowners, the following protocols will be observed. And item C, which says one, two, three, A, B, C. So this is three C, in which he writes, unless specifically requested by the landowner, the township will not require trail set-asides or public access as part of acquisition. Now, it is, it is my understanding that this language was defined slash required by the chairman of this board. And I think that that is most unfortunate.
Your own attending is incorrect. Go ahead, please.
Okay. What I'm concerned about in this language is that this township, through the present, and this is gonna be further discussed tonight, I think. But certainly up to this moment, it has been the clear stated, public, well-known and honored policy that conservation easements include public trail easements. And this goes along with the position of this board over numerous years, and certainly several times this year, that the township has taken official action in supporting the public trails of the township as they reach through the township and to the surrounding community. The red, the red clay trails come to mind as one example. This is a very, very important concern for this community. It is required under, as one of the considerations for charitable approval by the IRS in doing these kinds of transactions. And it goes to the definition of who we are as a community. What, what is the future all about for this, this township? And certainly keeping it as natural as possible and space for the bob turtles that I heard about today, when we were out looking at the trails up on Chander Mill Road and the bridge on Hillendale. And those are certainly issues that have to do with Schmidt and Connolly. This is what this community has officially been about for as long as I've been around. And when I've talked to people that have been here longer, they've talked about the same thing. In doing the long-term planning with the planning commission, these are things that we talked about as making this community a, a wonderful place to live and providing the kind of atmosphere that we want. So, having those public trails are vital for, for the region, and they are vital for the township. And this kind of language, although it doesn't say, you can't have them, it says, unless specifically requested by the landowner. It flips it all the way around. Unless specifically demanded by the landowner, you will have, is the way I think it should be written. And this is the exact opposite, and I'm very much opposed to it. So, I would be opposed to voting for, for accepting this proposal. And it has nothing to do with John.
Any other comments? John?
John Hickrich, resident Penn Township. Scott, could you clarify? I thought I heard you say that trails were required for someone to, by the IRS for charitable giving to donate an easement, for the township to buy an easement? Is that correct for your own satisfaction?
No. What I said was, is one of the concerns that the IRS looks for, is looking for charitable purpose in doing a conservation easement. And one of those is the vista.
Okay.
One of those has to do with animals and flora and fauna. And one of them has to do with public access. And the public access is a very important concern in the charitable definition. So, the way I said it was, is one of the concerns that the IRS looks to. It's not solely, and it's not absolutely mandated, but it certainly is an important one.
So, therefore, it sounds like this trail issue could be handled on a case-by-case basis, but not? I, I don't see why the specifics of a trail have to be in the proposal to hire a consultant to work on.
It is here, it is in here, and I'm suggesting the language of it is pass-accurate.
I'm just saying, why put trails in there? Do you have vistas in there, or animals, and these other kind of things you mentioned? I'm just suggesting that trails don't have to be in there.
And the reason that I, the reason that I'm saying that it should be in there is because that is the public policy of this township for the last twenty years or more. That there, that all of the, the conservation easements are supposed to have. Now, there may be a few that don't. I'm not aware of them, but there may be a few that don't. But basically, they've been mandated by all of them.
I'm gonna jump in here. Scott, would you be comfortable if that paragraph C was deleted from this proposal?
Yep.
I would be more comfortable if it said township will require trail set-asides. Unless specifically requested by the landowner, the township will require. That's the language that I would be willing to accept.
Yes, sir. I'm working with township CPA, and I've taken these deductions on people's taxes. These are merely saying that you will not build on a piece of property. You will maintain and build in space. If the township buys a piece of property, I could see putting a trail in or something for the township residents. But if you say, I want to be confident, sir, he's, he's on my property, I promise not to build there, they get a nice tax deduction for that, because it lowers the value of the property. It says nothing about if people are able to trade through your property. When I go, no, if I have, I have five acres in the middle of other properties, I'm not gonna put a trail through my property. It's like, okay, you gotta go down this road, and then you can walk on my property? Because I promised I would not build on there? To me, you're talking apples and oranges.
Then why should the taxpayers pay for it if you're not gonna give us public access?
No benefit.
At least look at it.
The township's got a payment for this.
Yes, we are. Sure we are. We're buying, you're not buying, you see, we're buying the conservation easement.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
And the answer to your, to your point back there, the IRS has established that visual access is sufficient.
Visual access, what?
Visual access is sufficient for the deduction that you might be taking on the conservation donation.
I'm sure according to that, Mike.
Yeah.
That's not what I read in the code.
No, not from me, no.
You've read that, Tom?
Not your interpretation, I don't agree with your interpretation. It's, it's a possibility. But again, as, as Mr. Stevens has said, you know, the IRS has to be able to look at all of those criteria.
We have in our presence someone by the name of Steve Carter. Steve is a resident of Penn Township. He is also a very active worker at the North American Land Trust. Steve has talked to me about this at great length. And Steve, I might ask if you would stand up, and I think you have had some specific references on this point.
Sure. There are several conservation purposes that will qualify for conservation easements. And we've already mentioned a few of them, wildlife, visual access, public access. It's, they're all equal, they're all one and the same. So you can have one qualify for easement, or you can have all five qualify for conservation easement.
And you're talking from whose definition?
The IRS. Correct. In order to qualify as charitable reduction.
But this, we're talking to IRS.
Excuse me, please, would you like to see it, Nolan? Go ahead, Steve.
That's right, from the IRS, correct.
Are you, are you finished? Okay, yes, please.
Yes, well, I have a question for Steve.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, now, in terms of the, in terms of the IRS, does the IRS decide this on the preponderance of the public, of the public benefit? Or does it automatically qualify because of one of the...
It just needs to meet one.
What?
It just needs to meet one of the five conservation purposes.
Okay. And, and meeting more or less of the conservation purposes has no impact?
That's not understanding, yes. I, I don't work for the IRS, so I can't speak on how they actually look at these things, but yeah, that's our understanding of it.
You understand, huh?
From our twenty years of experience.
I thought you said you had been dealing with the IRS.
It's time I continue.
You, no, I'm talking about you.
You can't, I'm sorry.
Have you been dealing with the IRS on this?
On, would I deal with the IRS? Well, yes, we do, well.
No, no, not we, you.
I have, yes.
So, you've gone through this issue specifically with the IRS?
This specific issue?
Yes, for the charitable contribution and what the IRS looks to for justifying its charitable approval.
We've done three hundred and fifty conservation easements.
You, you, dealing with the IRS.
I've never dealt with the IRS personally on this.
Thank you.
One more last question. Eva, please.
Yeah, Eva McFarlane, I'm a Penn Township resident. I think one way to solve this is that I know that easements, not, maybe not in Penn Township, but in the area, that have no public trails. And maybe if some specific ones could be cited, not tonight, but another time, it might help this problem. Because I know that people have made conservation easements without public access.
Were they bought by the township?
No, I'm not gonna go.
Or were they done?
I'm not, not, I'm not talking about the township, I'm talking about in general.
Okay. And your last one, there's a motion on the table, does it understand?
Yes, I do. Nancy Aronson, Penn Township. Seems to me that we're trying to solve the IRS's problems, that's their problem, to decide if a deductibility should be allowed. What I'm interested in is how my money is used. And if someone chooses to do something where the IRS doesn't allow a deduction, that actually is not the township's problem. The township's problem is, what do we want our money to be used for? My vote says to preserve the township, as it has been.
Thank you very much. Since there is a motion on the table, I call the questions. All those in favor?
I have a procedural question.
Go ahead.
So there was a discussion earlier that if, if a, if a motion was put on the table and discussed with public, and this is the first meeting to do that?
It's an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance?
No, no.
Okay, sorry.
That's why it's more important to, to have public discussion, I think.
Yes, of course.
I'm sorry, there's a motion on the floor, and I call the questions.
May I respond to the, to that last?
No, no, because I've made a motion, and it's settled, and I call the questions.
I wanted to explain why the use of the money, why it matters.
Do that afterwards, please, and I'd be happy if you did. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose?
Opposed.
Please, go ahead, explain what the, what the use of it.
On the, the only reason, the primary reason, I shouldn't say the only reason, the primary reason why somebody does a conservation easement is for the charitable benefit to the community and for the charitable benefit to the individual making the gift. And if, and the only way that that gift works is if you get a charitable contribution. Now, it's true, you do the deal, and if the charitable part falls through, too bad for you making the contribution, but the township now has it nevertheless. So the first half of what you said is correct. But on the first person to do it, and it gets turned down because it doesn't meet the charitable contribution requirements, too bad for that person. But every time that happens, people are gonna be less and less likely to do it as township because they are going to be concerned about being burned on getting their charitable contribution. If they don't get charitable contribution, they don't wanna do it. They care more about the contribution than the bob turtle. Which is, whether that's good or bad, I don't know, but that's what it is. So if we have a reputation as a township that are doing deals that are not adequate for charitable review by the IRS, then we are gonna discourage people making these contributions. That's why it comes back to hurt us.
I agree with that. Now, moving on to the...
This has to do with this, this general subject, not the Gatt. Although I do know John Gatt, and I think he's a, a very good individual. I had a question, is John Gatt still a core member of the Southern Chester County?
Not to my knowledge, no.
He, he has been for a long time.
That's correct.
He was an officer, either.
He's, he's been an officer, and local land...
That's correct.
Secondly, you said you had made a lot of suggestions to John Gatt of things to look into.
Places to look into.
Have you used the LCAC for any of these suggestions?
Not yet, no. We've tried to make contact with them, John. Well, we've tried, we've tried to woo them to come back into the township.
Who?
The LCAC is your command.
The LCAC is your committee?
It's your advisory committee.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
It's your advisory committee. Most members are here tonight.
I thought you were referring to the Land Conservancy of Southern Chester County.
You want them to come back to the community?
I think when you get John GAT in, one of the things he has got to do is look at the process we do, we use for this. The way it is now, the proposal, what my experience is, it comes, a proposal comes into you, individually you, and you decide whether or not it goes to the LCAC or not. A lot of other townships don't do that. They come into a special body for review and assessment. And then they make a proposal to the board. We need a process.
Well, we are still working on that process.
Well, we've been working on it.
I know.
Do I understand you, Mike, that you want TLC to come back into the community and be active in this community?
We have asked them twice and we've not heard anything back from them. Even though they both, at both times, they promised that they would get back to me.
Okay, I will, I will follow up.
Moving on, there's one other thing under new business which is not on the agenda. It has to do with eighteen forty-seven map of Chester County, Pennsylvania, that was given to the township, I'm going to say four or five years ago, by someone in the township. I have a picture. I'm sorry, it's quite small. It's not much of a help, but I'll be glad to show it to anybody afterwards. I'll tell you what was up with it. It's an important map. It's in bad shape. It's forty inch, forty-four high and fifty-four inches wide. It's big. And it desperately needs restoration. The Historic Committee has taken this finally and they have moved it over to a conservation organization around Philadelphia. It's called the Conservation Center. They have looked at this map and they have given us a proposal as to what it would take to fix it. Bring it up to snuff, frame it properly, and make it into a piece of hard work that we would be proud of.
What is the map of?
It's map of Chester County. We've looked at this. The Historic Commission is very anxious to move forward with this. The proposal from the Conservation Center is varied. It depends upon how much work they will need to do what they call the treatment. And they've given a range of thirty-five hundred to approximately forty-six hundred dollars to do that. They've given us concerning the housing of it, that is, how it's to be mounted, approximately three thousand dollars. And the framing, though it's not in this estimate, we estimate and they have verbally suggested it would be approximately a thousand dollars. These are loose numbers. And I move that we authorize the Historic Commission an additional eight thousand dollars in their budget for this purpose.
Second, discussion, please.
Thank you. I've, I've read over this proposal and it's very interesting. The one thing that I did not see here is anything to deal with acidic paper. And I call your attention that the date of the map is eighteen forty-seven. And that is certainly in the time range when the paper that was being used commonly was acidic. Consequently, old newspapers, even back to that time, turn yellow and they get brittle and they shatter. They crumble. Your old family Bible with all of its hand written, yeah, they turn yellow and crumble because it's acidic paper. And there's nothing in here, and I've gone through treatment and there's half a page listing of different treatment things. Remove wood elements, vacuum, reduce surface dry, insert neutrally toned paper into losses, on and on and on. Nothing about neutralizing the acid in the paper. So if they don't do that, then all the money that we spend is going to be wasted. Number two, the other thing that they're doing here, I was, I had to read it a couple of times before it really connected with me. After they do all of this, they take a picture of it and recommend that you duplicate with that picture and hang the picture on the wall. And what are they going to do with the original? And this isn't very clear to me, but what they're going to do.
No, I'll try to explain that to you because I had to go back to find the answer to that. If you looked on the page, not Eva, and I have to point this out to you. It's this page, it looks like this, with the table of costs. Yes, they have housing, option A and house in option B.
Right.
Option A is to do just that, take an image of it and use the image to frame and hang. But we have, if the Historic Commission has recommended we not do that. That's why that three thousand dollars is not in the eight thousand dollars that I was quoting.
Right. So option B is the same thing, but they're using, I think if I read this correctly, a different kind of acrylic, which is not anti-reflective.
Right.
So I don't know what we do with this original once we spend this eight thousand dollars. Are we not hanging it on the wall?
Yes, we would be.
We're going to hang the original on the wall?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, then. And that would be put in the foyer of the township building.
I think it's a lovely thing. And I'm fully in favor of doing all that's necessary. I'm just concerned we, that we need to do more.
Okay, I, I'm, since I can't answer your question here, I would amend my motion to make sure that that is covered in the contract that they give us. So the motion then is, as I put it, subject to clarifying the issue of, what's the phrase?
The acidic paper, right, the acidic paper.
Can you come to me on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's see. Back there, I don't think you said much. Go ahead.
Um, I just have a question. Where did, how do we find this firm that, that doesn't work? Was there any kind of a bid or any kind of a second, a second estimate?
Yes, the Historic Commission, about two estimates. One was from this and one was from another organization in Philadelphia. The other organization in Philadelphia didn't seem comfortable going to this extreme, provide this kind of assessment and the treatment. So this is what the Historic Commission, these, the Historic Commission is very comfortable with these people and that's why we're looking at this here now. We did not get a competitive bid, per se.
We have, we, we do, if we go forward with this, however, we do need to ask for a third quote. We don't have to go out for big deals, but we do need a third quote. I don't know if there's a third company that does it, but we do have to serve for that. And have it on record that we did serve for that.
Go ahead.
Just a suggestion. Have you considered Winterthur as a source? They have a wonderful preservation department at Winterthur.
I don't think they do this work, but I'll look into it. Thank you for the idea. Do you have a question here?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I would just, my thing is, well, it's all sort of, but what we're going to get is a photo of it after tomorrow. We're going to get the original.
If they get the original.
But they're going to load it up at one point.
No, not the way they were proposing to do it as an alternative.
I see.
And I admit, I had to go back to them to find that out.
I just want to ask about the bobinots and the snout. Not specifically, but someone owned it and presented it to you?
Yes.
So you know it was in the family? It was bought from someone? Where it was acquired from?
All I can tell you is the person who gave it to us claimed ownership. And I believe it was from, within her family that the art, the original was. Either purchased, made, or whatever.
I talked, I talked to her, Mike, and what she told me was that it was found in the attic of her family home where it's been for a hundred and fifty years, up against the wall, moldering away.
Is, just to follow up on a question, will the township have a letter from this resident offering this as a gift to the township?
I don't think that that was ever produced.
Just so, four years from now, somebody from the family can come back and go, "We never really gave it to you. We want it back." In reference to, to, to lend it to you.
After it's preserved.
I wonder if you're a politician, too.
Since this is a map of Chester County and not specifically the Kenton Township, is that correct? So have we approached the county or the county Historical Society to determine if they have any interest and whether they would contribute to this?
No, we have not. And I think that has to do with the, the attitude of our Historic Commission. They feel this is their map, which it is, it isn't, but they don't want to let it out of the township. And you know, I sort of feel a little bit towards that as well.
Right, so we haven't asked, we haven't asked the Historical Society or the county whether they would be willing to provide funds either to remain in the township.
Good point. I'll ask the chair of the Historic Commission. Good point. Okay. Okay, let's keep going on the, our agenda. Now, the next item on the agenda is the road report. Road crew has installed grates under East Hillendale Road at Woodward. Number two, oil and chip for two thousand and twelve was completed this month. The roads that were so oiled and chipped are hammered and cut off from Carthy Road, Cedar Croft Road, and Mill Road. The work, incidentally, was very well done. Paving for two thousand and twelve is underway. Two of the three roads are completed. Hillendale Road from Route Fifty-two to Pennsbury Concert Line and Norway Road from Woodward to Burton Mill Road. Both roads have had mill and fill base repairs done before the top was installed. The third road, East Hillendale, is set to be paved between Byer Road and Rosedale Road on September five, six, or seven, depending upon the weather. These roads that have been paved and chipped have had new signs installed, bringing them up to code. On July thirtieth, the railroad crossing was closed at Norway Road for four days for a complete removal and repair. This crossing will have new signals installed at a later date. Loose stone has been swept up on the roads that were oiled and chipped after they have been set for about a week. Rubberized cracked ceiling was done on several roads as part of our normal maintenance program. Line painting was done last week. The new roads that have been surfaced will be done probably by the end of next month. Okay, now, the yard waste pile is again set to be ground up this week. This has been pushed back twice, actually three times, due to weather and the contractor's schedule and the breakdown of his equipment. Pico will start to install a new gas main on Rosedale Road in the next few weeks. It will start at Woodward Drive on Rosedale and run to Norway Road. A short section will be put on Norway along with a short section on East Hillendale Road. Incidentally, instead of digging a trench, Pico is going to pour everything under the road, which will be much easier to do and it will be cleaner and we won't have to have people closing roads and flag waivers and that sort of thing. We're looking forward to that being installed by, hopefully, in the next, by the next month. Any questions on the road, Tom?
Will you natural gas be coming into the rest?
Not yet, no.
I think it's going to be offered to the people along that route if they want.
Yeah.
It's an option, yes.
Yeah.
I'm Clark Fox, Kenton Township. You made the comment that Norway Road is completed.
Except for the line painting.
Um, I can't cut my grass because the new surface is six inches higher than.
Then they have to fill, yeah, just to go through that.
Then it's not finished, is my point. There are, yeah, there are orange cones there, so I rest my case. Thank you.
That's why they're there, so you don't fall off the edge.
That's correct. It's, it had a lot of those orange cones on the sides of Norway. And as you see them disappearing is where they have filled in those areas with the previous, the old doorway road, which they mill and use for that purpose.
What if they put all my tropical?
All right. Okay, moving right along. Chandler Family Farm Property, please go ahead.
This is the Chandler Family Farm Property. It's located on South Street and Chandler Mill Road. And it's the South Mill Mushrooms, which is now called Chandler Family Farm Mushrooms, Pea Mushrooms. All they're doing is, they have, their property runs on the township and the borough line. So here's the township borough line right here. They are requesting to subdivide this parcel so that these buildings are totally located in the township and these buildings are totally located in the borough. They're not constructing anything, they're not changing any, the layout of anything. They just simply want the buildings on this side to be one town to one in the borough and this side to be in the township. The Plan Commission did recommend this to, for approval to the supervisors on August seventh. And the only condition that they set is that the borough has to approve the easement document, which the township already has. So it consists of twelve point one three acres and it's two tax parcels. So I ask.
So, are there any questions? Second, do you move the, the second? Any other further questions? Seeing and hearing none, I.
Are there any tax liabilities or any tax, changes in the taxes?
No, right now, the new can only tax it from the township and the borough can only tax it from the borough. And when this is divided, it will be the same.
Tax advantage.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This next property is located on Creek Road. It's just a lot line change. Both properties are owned by, the parents own one property and the children own this property. The, they want to sell the parents' property eventually and their, the driveway for the lower lot runs on the top property. And they're trying to eliminate the major portion of that. So they have done a lot line change, which the property line was ending right along here and now the property line will be up here. And they, they still need all the ordinance requirements as far as setbacks for the houses and the septic and well. And they're not building anything new, not changing any structures. And it consists of six point five five four acres in the R two district.
Okay, so move it a bit. Second, are there any questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, I move the question. All those in favor? Aye.
The last property on the agenda is a DUCAP property. The supervisors approved that plan last month. There was a third condition on there, requesting that the applicant acknowledge that he does not have the right to maintain the right of way. We have removed that condition and the supervisors need to reapprove the motion without that condition in it.
So, second, okay. Any questions or, or issues? Tom?
Just for the record, should, should there be something added to this motion that says what you just said, that it would rescind the motion from previous?
That's what you'll say in a minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
As a related homeowner, or will have been brought, I'm wondering, when was this discussed? Does this revision drop, did the third requirement discussed in another meeting?
It was, it was discussed with this BUCAP. And it was discussed and reviewed by council and a recommendation of council that we do it in this fashion. And it was done, the township manager and I met with BUCAP. And then the matter went to council to review. And that review is, is what leads to this motion.
But you're correct, it has to have no public exposure.
And. And are you aware that 18 homes represented by the homeowners association have been involved in the process of understanding how this would affect him? I would ask, did you ask to inform the president of the homeowners association about this?
I did. I did. I sent a letter to him. Mr. Beca has acknowledged in writing that he understands the maintenance of that right of way, and when he builds those lots, he has the authority to maintain that right of way in front of those lots. And that was sent to the president along with a copy of the revised motion.
Okay, I was unaware that, I'm the treasurer of the homeowners association, and I was not aware of that motion.
Nothing really changes in which regard to the homeowners association by doing all this. What, Lisa, help me with this one as I go through it, but we prepared, we prepared language for Mr. Beca to agree to. He responded with a three paragraph. We gave him one, he gave us back three. We met with him and talked about it, reviewed it with council, and we are accepting paragraphs one and two, which is our original first paragraph, and the second one does not substantially change. It doesn't change what the law is. It's an acknowledgement of what the law is. So nothing has changed. The relationship of the township to the homeowners association and who's responsible for that property, that right of way maintenance has not changed. What we've done is now had Mr. Beca recognize that until he actually does the development on his property, it's going to continue to be maintained by the homeowners association. Only after he does his development of his two properties will he then take over responsibility for that property. And that requires sightlines and setbacks and a whole bunch of other things that are going to affect that road under any circumstances. So it's appropriate that it change at that point. So in terms of the homeowners association, there really is no change in facts.
I have an odd question that just came to mind while you were talking, Scott.
Before you ask though, may I just ask Lisa, could I describe that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
From what you've said, after he develops his two lots, then he assumes the responsibility for the maintenance of the right of way. Is that correct? What if he does one and not the other? Who does the maintenance?
I'd say look where you wrote it. I think that he has to do both.
Yeah, it just suggests that he would do both.
It was, it was required that he, after he develops one lot, he does, he maintains both right of way?
It says once he builds on the lot, so you could probably take that, that once he builds both, you know. But the township could go in and maintain it if he doesn't need. It's all right with that.
Again, I apologize for not having read whatever has happened here.
We apologize if we didn't include you.
Well, I sent it to the HOA, the president, because he was going to contribute it to all of you.
So is there still an acknowledgement that the right of way is owned by the township?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And in fact, it doesn't matter. That's what the law is. It is the title of the township. So he can't, all we wanted was him to say, you're right, I don't have the right to deal with this. And he's given that.
Very well. I, not having read what was transpired, I wasn't sure if the entire arrangement had changed beyond what you just described. Okay, good. Thank you very much.
So the, so the, everybody's understanding that that letter that I wrote will be recorded with the plans. Is that correct, Mr. Stevens?
Recorded with the plans?
That's your, that's your choice if you record that. And we don't do it, you know, we don't, that's not something we, you can record whatever you want with the plans.
Okay, but the, just so that we understand, is the, the township is acknowledging that letter that will be recorded with the plans in its entirety, because you can't, I can't record part of the letter.
No, I wrote you a letter from, on the advice from our council that we agree with you on number one, but we cannot give a position on two and three.
Okay, but, but what you're proving is the recording of that letter?
No, they're not, they're approving your plan, that's it.
Okay, so then the letter's not...
They're not approving your letter at all.
Not approving, so the letter is not approved, accepted, acknowledged or anything that? Okay, that's fine.
Acknowledged with the letter, what letter?
I, I sent a letter acknowledging your letter, just responding to these points in your letter. But it's not part of this plan. This plan's purpose is just for your subdivision.
Okay.
They were coming to old business, and by the way, when we...
No, we're still extending.
Go on, say it for us.
We have three requests for extensions, line of term extension until September 19, the hand property until 11/27, and four GDR properties, 52, 4-52, 48, 50, and 51, until September 1st of next year. I move we approve those extensions.
All those in favor? All of us? Aye, aye. Old business. The format of our agenda next month will have old business moved up before new business. For your information. Going into old business, work sessions, we'll talk about them here, having another work session. We're still waiting for input from the public. Would you just wait a minute, please? We're waiting for input from the public as to what they want. We've kicked it around and we don't have any major feel for what the public would like to see. And accordingly, I'm going to ask again that the public, please let your views be known by Tudiza, and we will respond as much as we can to them.
Well, Mike, before you go on, I want to say that the royal "we" does not include Scott or Stevens. We have not discussed this as a group.
No, it has not been discussed, period.
Yes.
So last time, last month, when this issue came up, we gave you the results of the survey about 25 residents. Virtually all of them, nearly all of them, said, I think 96% that they would like to see the work sessions resumed. And I think another 92% said that they would like them in the evening. So that's a pretty significant response, but since that time, we've collected a petition of 109 residents, which specifically asks for exactly that 7:30 meeting two weeks after the normal POS. So you're in the petition?
Thank you.
Nine.
My, my suggestion and my recommendation, my request to the public is still, in spite of this, which is important, and I haven't seen it before, would you please make your feelings and ideas known to Lisa about another work session?
I would nevertheless make the motion that we honor those petitions and that we begin for a six-month period to schedule work sessions pursuant to the language of the specific petitions that have been signed. And I do that for a couple of reasons. The first one is that it's because of a, an outreach by the community specifically to this board of supervisors. It's not addressed to the township manager, was done specifically to bring to this meeting.
Have you seen this before?
I signed one, although I've seen one, one line, the one that I signed. But I also note that since, since the work sessions were unilaterally canceled by the chairman without the vote of the board, these meetings have gone on for, it's now 9:30 and we still have significant business yet to do. They typically go until 10 o'clock or 10:30. There's a lot of business that needs to be taken care of, and we're not getting around to being able to do it. And the, these, these work sessions have been very important in the past because they allowed a lot of work to be taken care of in a meaningful way, even when they were done during the day and a lot of people couldn't attend. Certainly not like we have attendance here tonight. So I make the motion that we institute the work sessions as we, as suggested in the petition for a six-month period.
I haven't seen it, so I'm not going to move.
Would you like to take a look at it?
No, I haven't seen it. I'm quite willing to let the rest of the township input, and let's table this if that's your wish. Let's table it until next month, and hopefully we'll have some more responses from the people. Yes, please.
Can I, can I just ask, what exactly, what threshold of response, what threshold of contact is it? Number of contacts, at least, that you're looking for? What exactly is it that you would want to see in order to have the work sessions open to the public in the evening?
Well, that's a, that's a subjective answer to your question. That's all I can give you. And then what I can tell you is that we had these work sessions during the day, and they tailed off into no, nobody coming. We tried, I believe it was six months, evening.
No.
Eventually, nobody came.
Late afternoon.
Late afternoon, I beg your pardon. Late afternoon, we changed the time. Late afternoon, no one came.
No one.
Not true.
Well, hardly, not enough for us to make the effort of...
Your tenants didn't change, really.
It was very, very diminutive. So we're going to, we're going to let it go at this time until next, next month, okay?
So I understand, and I know you've stated that concern in the past. My question to you is, I mean, I think if the public understood what it is you're looking to see in order to, to, to have the feeling that, that that situation is, is no longer current, what exactly is it that would, would convince you that the people want this? Like, is it a, is it 100, do you want those 100 people to call Lisa? Do you want to see 200 people? What is it that you, what is it that you want?
Not sure that the number is terribly important, although the number is somewhat important. What we want to see is, is more enthusiasm from a wider group, notwithstanding this person's efforts to get these petitions, and I applaud him for doing this, but I have no idea, people sign petitions very often without even knowing what they're signing. I've asked strongly that people stand up strongly and say yes. Not necessarily through petition, but that's...
Yes, 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 yes.
That's a very figurative statement on the people that took their time to sign their name to something that they think is important. It suggests that they just dashed it off. You haven't even looked at it to know what it says.
That's why I'm not going to vote on it.
It's three lines!
If you look at it, then you know.
And it's what was proposed before.
Are you willing to survey this group to see how many would like to sign a meeting?
No, not.
Why not?
Most of the people here are going to say yes.
Remember last time you canceled the meeting?
That we don't have?
Because somebody, somebody insulted you. That's why you canceled the meeting. Not because there wasn't a man for it.
I apologize for my poor, poor choice of words.
Yes, well, apologize for the last six years of your poor choice of words.
Round order.
Right.
No, I'm sorry.
I, I...
All right, one more comment because we are really going to postpone this until next month.
Carol, yes. We're not asked, we're asking, I think Mr. Stevens asked for six months to try this. We're not committed to it for a lifetime. We have a room full of people who are anxious to come to work session. How is it that that's not a good choice? How is it that we shouldn't move forward on this?
I'll give you one reason. We voted not to take action at these work sessions, so nothing would have changed tonight's meeting. We couldn't do any of these things at a work session.
We could have talked our way through it. We're having the work ready to get started.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next, and last, the gentleman on the...
I know what you're going for.
...agreement to purchase the development rights and the conservation easement for Ralph Schmidt on the corner of Hillendale and McFarland. This has been before the open public session and the supervisors for a number of months. This has been debated. This has been vetted by our land conservancy advisory committee, and they have recommended that this is a good deal for us to do. We have agreed, they, we have agreed, and the board supervisors has discussed this at great length, that we will pay $200,000 to purchase the conservation easement for Ralph Schmidt with a total of 9.6 acres, if I remember correctly. Ralph has had, we have received the appraisal from, a qualified appraiser. Ralph will be able to, to take a bargain sale arrangement because the appraiser praised the conservation easement value at $275,000. So he will be able to take an additional deduction. This is something that is of no concern to us, but it's something that Ralph is concerned with because it is an IRS matter. You have seen this. You've talked about it at great length at prior meetings. It does not contain a trail easement because in your presence Ralph Schmidt said he did not want a trail easement on his property. And that's the only important change, and as a matter of fact, it's about the only change in this document in front of me, this agreement to purchase from the one that you have looked at before. Having said that, I'm going to make a motion that we sign this agreement to purchase this development, the development rights on Ralph Schmidt's property.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
It is hard to believe that the Schmidt easement is once again under consideration and on tonight's agenda. What is this? Four meetings now? Let's review. First, Mike met unilaterally and in secret with Ralph to work out the arrangements for Mike's deal, with him for a conservation easement. Mike specifically elected to keep me in the dark about it, although Mike communicated with Bob Hammacher throughout the process. When I confronted Mike about this, Mike specifically told me that I was, quote, "the enemy," end quote, and that it would be better if I didn't know anything about it. Mike accepted his appraisal from an appraiser not from this area, whose appraisal, Mike said, was not up to the professional standards Mike expected, which is a little different from what he just said right now. This opinion was echoed by every conservancy expert I talked with about this transaction thereafter. Its pricing was off-base because the fair market value claimed for the property was overpriced. It was hundreds of thousands of dollars higher than the price then being asked by Ralph for the property. Note that the property did not sell and has not sold for that reduced price, much less the inflated values suggested by Ralph's appraiser. The legal package was deficient, and the presentation had to be tabled to be worked over and corrected by NALT. When it came back before the board, it was after council for NALT and the board had met with all interested parties, and it was fully vetted. The only thing left undone was the insertion of specific language of meets and bounds for the trail portion of the easement. We, being I, Ralph, Mike, Bob Hammacher, NALT, and all council, had all agreed to the inclusion of a trail easement. You just have to take a look at the recordings on YouTube, and you'll see everybody say it. The plan for the easement was passed unanimously on a clearly understood and expressed understanding that we would shortly thereafter meet to define the specific meets and bounds of the trail easement. trail easement. Weeks later, not shortly thereafter, I was invited to a meeting ostensibly for the purpose of working out that trail description. When I arrived, only Mike, Ralph, Steve Carter of NALT, and I were present. Bob Hammacher was not to be found. Instead of proceeding on the agreed purpose of the meeting, Mike advised me that Mike and Bob had met and agreed that a public trail was not necessary and that the already passed plan would be reconsidered to effectuate that change. So I'm going to take a break for this particular moment. I want to ask Bob, did you agree with Mike to that, or is Mike blind to me at that meeting?
I don't recall.
You don't recall? Thank you. I responded to Mike's announcement that if Mike and Bob met to discuss and conclude this change, it was a violation of the sunshine law. That this behavior reflects Mike's lack of integrity by unilaterally going back on Mike's word and Mike's vote. That this approach is a violation of township policy regarding the necessity for inclusion of public trails in township eased land. That it violates the commitment of the township to a meaningful township trail system. That it violates the existing process for handling conservancy easements in the township. That it violates the desired comity and integrity among supervisors in the transaction of township business. That it was personally insulting and in bad taste directed toward me. That it was insulting in bad taste and done in bad faith to the citizens of the township who expect and demand a higher degree of professionalism by and among the supervisors. That it was insulting to Ralph Schmidt, who has been led down a garden path by Mike in this whole process, which has been fraught with errors and Mike's personal whims from the very beginning. And that it is personally and professionally dishonest to commit to the plan and then unilaterally attempt to change it. Mike stated that this is the way it is, and it would be finished as amended at the next board of supervisors meeting, that is, tonight. So here we are now with an emasculated conservation easement before us for consideration. It provides virtually no value or benefit to the township. It violates the clear and longstanding policy of the township policy regarding public trails. It is a product of a unilateral effort by Mike or a meeting by Mike and Bob in violation of the sunshine laws of the commonwealth. It places at risk the charitable deduction from the IRS that Ralph hopes to take through this effort. It once again insults me personally and professionally by Mike continuing to try to marginalize me and to go around my back. It puts the township at risk, and it makes it the laughing stock of the surrounding municipalities by Mike behaving like a loose cannon. It attempts to accomplish goals only known to Mike and for reasons only favoring him. This arrangement proposed to proceed on an overvalued and overpriced appraisal when it included a public trail. Now with the deletion of that trail, it is grossly overpriced. Further, the fees being charged to township by NALT are greater than any conservancy in the area charges. I am adamantly opposed to this arrangement and vote against the change to the previously passed transaction. I believe the vast majority of citizens of this township, they who voted for a meaningful conservancy easement tax to preserve land and provide trails, are also opposed to it as well. Just ask them and just listen to them. Thank you. My message be included in this.
I object.
So do I.
Can't.
Oh, yes, you can.
I'm not quite sure what to say. I'm not calling on anybody just yet. I'm not quite sure what to say with such a broadside. I don't feel it's my interest or anybody's interest to pick his accusations apart. There are many that are misrepresenting, misrepresented. Go back only to the trail easement subject, briefly, which I did visit with you people once before. When this township had its own land trust, it was decided at that time, the executive director at that time, who was a lawyer, suggested that we do include trail easements on conservation easements that we were writing. And her point was appealing, and it became not a requirement, but it was conventional. And every easement that was written did include a trail easement. Her general reasoning to do this was that it would pacify one of the five or six, one of the reasons that Steve Carter enumerated before, that would allow the IRS to accept conservation easement deduction. It was only very recently that I found out that that particular trail easement was indeed not required by the IRS specifically. And toward that end, dealing with Ralph Schmidt, as I have been dealing with Ralph Schmidt on this subject for probably a year or longer, he did not want a trail easement, but it was kind of pushed on him by me because I was under the impression that it was required. Since that time, I found out it was not. Ralph Schmidt does not want a public trail on his property. He's been, he felt that way all along, and now he has no reason to go forward with it. It's like you and changing your will. You have the right to change your will anytime you want to, up until the time of your death. And that's exactly what Ralph had asked to have put into this purchase agreement, and that's what we have done. We have removed the requirement of a trail at his request, and we will probably never have that requirement again in any of our conservation easements that the township spends money for.
Really? Whoa.
Why spend money then?
Yeah, why are you giving away free money?
If he changed his mind, then we can change your mind about paying for it.
Exactly.
And how much to pay?
Exactly. You should pay less for not having the trail easement, as he, as all of you apparently agree.
The value of the conservation easement has been well-established by the appraiser, and he had no idea there was or was not to be a trail at that time. And our land advisory committee has decided that with or without a trail, the $200,000 that we are paying for this easement is well, is a good buy. It stands the test of time with the easements that have been placed within the township by the Kent Township Land Trust, which per acre, the average cost of one of our easements, of all of our easements, is a great deal less than that, which is the average price that we're paying for Ralph's conservation easement. This is not, this is not, this doesn't, the trail does not add value or take value from the property.
It absolutely does.
Do you know that there is a trail easement on my conservation easement?
Yes.
Does anybody here know that?
Yes.
Where is it?
It's in the deed.
Where is the, where is the easement on the property?
But it gives rights, Mike. It gives rights that are valuable. Doesn't matter where it is.
So far on every one of the easements that I'm familiar with in Kent Township, nobody has ever taken access to the right of the trail.
We saw them at the future.
Have you been to State Line Woods?
Yeah.
There's hundreds, there's miles of trails.
And the land belongs to the town, belongs to the land trust.
But respectfully, Mike, you know, a trail, a trail is not built in one fell swoop. A trail is built bit by bit by bit. And just because there's not a connection to the, you know, just because there's no trail that connects to the easement on your property doesn't mean there never will be one. So that's where the value comes. But I have another question. Scotter mentioned about the sunshine law. So my question is, if someone files a suit under the sunshine law and the township has to try to defend that, are we going to have to pay for the lawyers for that?
I can't answer it, will you, on that basis? I don't know.
Well, I request that the supervisors take that under consideration.
Do we have any other comments?
Yeah. I would think since this trail issue is such a big issue, it would make more sense that if the person doesn't want the trail, the easement, the price value should come down. That way there you would go, and the person would more likely go with a higher, that way they at least have the option. But without the trail easement, it's not the same value.
What we are getting for what this $200,000 is going to buy is a magnificent view.
From the road.
From the road.
Is there going to be parking along the road so we can stop? Or we got to just that one second as you ride back?
If there was a trail as where it was proposed, there wouldn't be parking.
But you don't see the advantage, the advantage in the future of getting, giving more for the right for the easement and less for, that needs to be beneficial to everybody.
If we're investing in the future, why are we cutting off, we're losing all our arms to say we will not have trails ordered in the future? We're only investing in a future view because your view of the law now says that it doesn't, it is not incumbent upon them to give us anything but a view. Why are we not giving our children and our grandchildren and the future generations who will move in here, something that we are paying for now?
They're paying for the major part of the conservation, that's what we're planning, open space in the house. Open space never contemplated. The charter of the Kent Township Land Trust never contemplated trail.
Why did they insist upon trails and all of the reasons?
That was up to Gwen, because she was the executive director, and we all thought it was probably a good idea, and she said it was unfortunately incorrect.
From the very beginning?
No.
The importance was there.
Gwen.
The importance hasn't changed.
No.
That's right. So it's from the beginning, it was Gwen that did it.
No.
We got easement before Gwen came here.
There's a question back here.
Yes, the property as it stands now, if we didn't purchase the easement, how would it be likely developed?
Two lots, two more houses. That's what we're purchasing. That right, not to build. That's what the $2,000 goes for, not the trail.
$200,000.
$200,000. That's for two lots, two four-acre lots.
Not nine acres?
In the back.
Yeah, it does seem to me that there's more to this than just how it's divided up and how much money it is, although that's a very strong factor. I think it comes down to kind of a moral issue that this was agreed upon by all of the people that were cited, and it's being reneged now. And it really has nothing to do with just one person's perception of a change. It has to do with something that was agreed upon originally, and to not agree to that anymore is, shows a tremendous failure in keeping one's word. And that, I think, is very serious to consider as we are viewed by people from within our township and beyond us, not to stick to what was agreed upon.
Scotter's question, in your statement, I think you read that there is no value to the township to require the easement. Is that worth it?
I can think of the exact line, but that's the gist of it. What we are getting is significantly reduced. The view ain't that great when you look at the large picture of it. There's more to it than just a.
If you accept there's no value or don't want, does that mean that the choice, is this possibly a choice? That we, because of this trail issue, we do not agree to purchase an easement from Schmidt? Schmidt turns around and builds two houses. Is that what the choice is?
No, Schmidt agreed at the last meeting.
But that's a possible.
And we signed agreement of sale, and the only thing we had to do was to put in the specific language, the meets and bounds for the trail. It was all agreed. The motion that's on the floor now is to change that signed agreement of sale to take out the trail.
But that was not Schmidt's request, was it not?
Schmidt's unilaterally changing.
It was a signed agreement of sale. It was too late. And he agreed to it because that's what he wanted. And every time I talked to him, going back to February, he was in favor of it. Whatever you want, he said to me, numerous times, whatever you want. He sat right there at the conclusion of a meeting, said whatever you want.
Okay, so he does not have.
Now all of a sudden, the last minute, he changes his mind. After he's got. Hold on, would you let him face it? He's on the floor. No, I was answering him. He's on the floor. Go ahead, John, go ahead.
You're suggesting now that Schmidt does not have the right to withdraw from it?
That's correct. Unless we change the agreement of sale, he's committed. But he led us to understand that he was committed to it. Because that's what he said at the meetings, at these meetings.
Well, I think it's a legal matter, has to do with a legal document, whether he has the right to withdraw or not, and what I heard is they chose to change it.
That's correct.
Very confusing.
And unfortunately, we're going to run this down fairly quickly. We have four hands up here, and I'm going to call on you four folks, and that will be the last comment. Go ahead, please.
So my understanding from what Scotter just said.
You have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So, for that to explain, my understanding from what Scotter just said was that we have an agreement with Schmidt, which at this point, he has unilaterally requested to change, right?
Yes.
Okay. And my question would be, what advantage is it to the township? If we have an agreement with him, he's agreed, and he's agreed to a trail, which certainly would be of some public benefit. What advantage does the township, is it to accept that? He cannot withdraw from this agreement. He's made the agreement. What advantage do we gain by paying the same amount for not having a trail?
We get somebody who is far happier with the agreement.
I'm like, sorry, he signed the agreement. Now it's, now you, as the supervisors, have a right, have the responsibility of acting in the best interest of the township, not in the best interest of Mr. Schmidt, okay? And so you have to explain, in this case, why you would renege on your vote and how that would benefit the township. Making Schmidt happier doesn't benefit the township. What would benefit the township would be the agreements we have and not giving up benefits that we got through the agreement, and certainly not for the same price.
Are you done? Next person.
I'm asking you a question. What benefits would we get?
I tried to explain it to you, but I guess you weren't listening.
I listened very carefully. Help me listen to my question. What benefits would we get?
We get a much happier person who is willing to do the things that are necessary to want his property to keep it in good.
Get to good order. The conservation is. So one, so one person in the township gets a benefit. So one, so one person in the township gets a benefit and the rest of us, yes, he gets the gold mine, we get to share it.
Next one over here.
Two questions, Michael. One is that you had referenced the approval of the LCAC ordinance. And I think you inferred that the LCAC needed full approval even to the value of the property.
No, if I did that, it would be incorrect.
Okay, so you confirm that the LCAC did not comment on the value of the property?
Well, they may have commented.
Not in writing.
Frankly, that's correct, not in writing.
Okay. Second question, you might appease us if you would agree to a second appraisal of property with an appraiser who is familiar with the fact that there's no trail and get a second opinion.
That was suggested quite some time ago where the trail was even on, in the agreement, the second appraisal, and that was turned down.
Or.
Because it's unnecessary. We don't have to pay for it and it's not, not required.
Michael, and all due respect, it's $200,000 necessary.
I understand that.
It's our money.
But don't you understand that it isn't, it is not a requirement to have a second appraisal on the property?
Prudent, though.
Yeah, but the terms have changed.
It would be prudent if we would get three or four. When do you stop?
How about two?
One is enough.
How about two, we'll stop at two.
Hold on, you had a second question, Bill?
That was it.
Oh, okay, all right. Tom?
Can I, can I ask you to, Mr. Schmidt, was it public meetings and, you know, detail got talked about the trail by him and how it could be accommodated by him because of the bank along Hillendale and, you know, it was, everybody heard it in room. So I guess two-part question here. Can you address why he changed his position on that? And then also can you address with the group here, why you've changed your position? Because twice you've sat in my living room over the years and you've done a lot of work. You've always been out there, you've knocked on my door twice and sat down with, with my wife and I in my living room. And at that time, a big objection of mine to doing my property was because of the trail. I didn't really want a trail. And we talked about my property plus Bell Turner and you were adamant. There was no way that I was not going to, that I was gonna be considered without a trail. And so therefore I never did that. And your position is obviously going 180 degrees.
Absolutely correct.
What's that?
Absolutely correct, 180 degree turn.
And can you give us some reasons why Mike has done that?
I'll, I'll do this again for the benefit of you. It was conventional in the Kent Township Land Trust that we would require a trail for the purpose of the IRS. Which turns out to be none of our concern in the first place.
That's not how you ever presented it to me.
I know that's true.
That maybe, you may, but you, you said my living room and you said you had to have it.
Tom, I'm trying to tell you that I.
You never brought up that you were concerned about my position with the IRS. And that's what I'm trying to get at is, you know.
I, I have, I'll say this to you once again for the last time. When I sat in your living room, indeed I did insist on a trail. I was dead wrong. I didn't have to do that. That's why I'm saying now 180 degree turn.
Did you pass my property along to Mr. Gott?
I will if you want me to.
I want to know whether you did.
No.
Okay.
No. If you want me to, I'll be glad to. Last one, go ahead.
Are you familiar with the red clay trail system here in the township?
Somewhat.
Somewhat. Did you sign a letter last year endorsing it?
No.
Yes, you did. I can provide you copies, your, the Board of Supervisors.
The Board of Supervisors.
You were in charge then, you were on the board then, right? Okay, good. I want to get that straight. Are you aware that the property, the Schmidt property, will exactly line up with another trail that is being agreed to by Limestone, the folks at Limestone Ridge? Are you aware of that? So this does connect?
No, I don't.
Well, that's, that's the fact. That's the fact. Now, I have a question for Mr. Carter.
There is that, I, I have, I have to clarify, where is their proposed trail to be?
You'll have to check with the Land Trust of Southern Chester County, they have it all worked out.
I can tell you that there is an existing, very poorly defined trail on the eastern side of the property that goes all the way from the top of McFarland down to Hillendale. Terribly ill-defined and it goes right across Tom Nail's property without his permission.
He has a trail easement.
No?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
So, you know, that could happen as well.
Have you seen what that, the loose definition of that trail is?
No, I haven't seen the exact definition. My other question's for Mr. Carter. Mr. Carter, does Nolte maintain any trail easements?
No, we do not.
You do not?
No.
So it's really interesting that you chose the only conservation agency in this area that doesn't take trails. And are, you might want to let everybody know here that the Land Trust of Southern Chester County offered to administer that trail. So you're basically unilaterally telling many of the people in this room, because I won't speak for everyone, that the benefit of a public trail, you don't think is any good anymore. So you, by yourself, are gonna stop this.
No, sorry, I don't think that's true.
Well, you're doing it. You've negotiated all this in private, you've changed the deal with Mr. Schmidt.
I follow what the owner of the property wants to do.
How about the citizens? It's our money.
It's our money.
It's our money. We're telling you this is not a good deal for us.
You're presenting us.
You mean to tell me that just because of the trail, you would total the whole agreement?
Yes, absolutely.
Right away.
Absolutely.
And I'll tell you, Mr. Schmidt won't either. Mr. Schmidt has it for sale, he's moving.
He hasn't sold the property how long? Years.
And he already agreed to it.
We have it on record.
In record and on writing and on videos.
And you have a signed bill of sale that mandates a trail.
Why would you do this? And you predict that there will never be another trail.
There is a motion on the floor, if you don't mind, there's a motion on the floor to accept this purchase agreement. And I call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
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 Is there any other business? Oh, before we leave, I have one other announcement to make. We're considering bringing back the communications committee and hoping for folks to edit and present it. And if you have ideas about it and would like to participate in it, please communicate those to me. What is the committee's opinion? If the committee would have had on your, if you have a purchase of communication.